All right. Good afternoon, everybody. It's the town of Dewey Beach. Town council, public hearing and monthly meeting is being held at Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as via Zoom. Today's Friday, March 21st, 2025. It's 3 o'clock. With that, I'd like to convene the town commissioners' meeting. Please stand, remove your hats, and have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next is roll call. Commissioner Gibbings.
Here.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bill Stevens here, so all five. And we have forum. We also have our chief, our town manager and council here up front as well as a packed house inside. With that, can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Motion. Which, aren't there two?
There are two.
One set of minutes or two? I'm not sure.
Make sure.
There are two, January and February.
January and February. Do you want to do both? You want them separately?
No, I was just trying to be clear.
Yep. Motion, and they are on the website in case anybody wants to look. So I motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the meeting is for any public comments for non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the meeting room, the Zoom room?
No one has reached out in chat.
Let me know if anyone does.
Sure.
Committee reports. Commissioner Gibbings.
The Climate Change Committee met last Saturday. They had a really good meeting. All of the members of the committee were present, at least either virtually or here in person. And the members had done a lot of prep work before the meeting, too. So they'd all, not all of them, but they had done some interviews with some of the other surrounding towns to find out what they're doing with respect to climate change and in particular, particularly with respect to resiliency efforts and how those communities are dealing with the need to have a resilient community. There was one recommendation that came out of the meeting, and that one that we'll have to deal with. They recommended that the town engage a consultant to help us develop a resiliency plan and also develop a resiliency fund. They talked a little bit about what some of the sources of funding might be, but that's something that will take up here among commissioners at a coming, I don't know, next month or probably a month after that. One other thing I was going to mention, I cannot remember what it was. I'll stop there since I gave my boss my train of thought, so.
It's all right. Maybe we'll come back to the station. Commissioner Bauer.
Nothing more to add on the budget or finance committee meeting. Finance and investment is, what is our new title for that?
Finance.
Finance. And then marketing, we're still looking for a chair for the committee. We still have all the members in place, but we need a chair to run the meeting. So if anybody is willing or has a friend that's interested, somebody preferably in town, so let me know so we can get that going. As an offshoot of the marketing committee, we did the Dewey and Bloom, and I know they're getting ready to plant some flowers here coming up in May. So everybody's getting ready now. And that's it? Oh, Patrice received voluntary of the year and was awarded. I thought we announced that. I'll announce it a second time.
Commissioner Jazinski.
No updates.
All right. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. St. Patty's Day was very busy. Our police department did an outstanding job with some other officers that were in town that assisted. I'll let the chief go into that a little more. I met with Costello, Dave Costello from Costello Construction this past week to just go over the lot. He's hoping we could start in mid-April. Also, we met with DPNL, with their engineers, because our building is going to be somewhat close to the transmission lines that run up and down Route 1. We know what the setbacks are. No problem with building to building. We're just going to have to be very careful with booms from the cranes when they swing around. Costello was made aware of that. DPNL explained it to him, so I think we're good to go there. Reed Avenue, Army Corps of Engineers, we're still waiting for them to review the documents right now. The next step would be a partnering agreement with the town, and of course, I'll have town attorney look at that before we proceed. Jersey Street, we expect the materials to be in for that project, drainage project in the next two weeks. And then once they start, it'll be a two- to four-week project, both on the first and second block of Jersey. Kate, if you could bring up the photos of the sidewalks at this point? So you could see what it looked like before. Could you go from the northbound and southbound side? That's between Daggers and McKinley. And no, that's a project we're doing now to re-mark the sign, re-mark the crosswalks. But then that's what it looks like now. So you can see, Adel's doing a great job. They've had to do, put up with some weather and some other things, but they are just doing an outstanding job. Thanks, Kate. And then I think what Commissioner Persinger may have wanted to say is that we attended Rascal Conference.
Thank you.
And some of the highlights, some of the highlights from the Rascal Conference, and it talks about environment and resiliency and flooding here in Delaware, was basically they put out short bursts of rain. You're going to see more of that. All seasons will be warmer, longer growing seasons, less cold time, just the stuff that goes along with some of the global warming that's being put out. Also, Kate, if you could bring up our page that talks about flooding on our webpage that the town has? Because I get asked a lot of time, hey, where's all the information on flooding? We're buying a house. The climate committee asked about that. Dawn has done an outstanding job bringing up and doing a lot of links and answering a lot of questions on our town webpage. If you go under property owners, and then you go under flooding, and you click on that, and if you could just scroll down real slow, Kate. I mean, there is a bunch of information on here. I've been asked, could we make pamphlets and other things? I think the information you need is right here with all the links. I really would hate to waste our time and money to make pamphlets up, so I would ask, if anybody's got any questions, please go to our town webpage. All the information you need is right there. Next is April 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Hyatt in the Sunset Room. The Civic League and the town will be presenting a history of Dewey Beach all the way up to 1962. It'll be a cash bar. There'll be some light food served. So again, that's April 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Hyatt in the Sunset Room. Lifeguard tryouts are this Sunday, the 23rd, and Sunday, the 30th, and then April 6th at 11:30 here at the lifeguard station. Still looking for parking and dog ambassadors. Those jobs pay $19 and $17 an hour. May 10th is the art festival. That's Mother's Day weekend in the Rudder Parking Lot. April 1st, April 1st, our parking permits will go on sale. We had our 10-year audit with FEMA. Dawn and Jim did an excellent job. I think FEMA was satisfied with the responses. And of course, they're always going to find something, because if they're not doing an audit and they can't find something to try to improve the town, but they did a great job. I don't know if Dawn or Jim have any additional comments on that?
No, sir.
All right, not hearing any. Town employees attended a NARCAM training that was put on by Amy Keviss from the Partner Public Safety Solution Team. We've got NARCAM now here at the lifeguard station in the AED. We got a town hall in the AED box and also at the starboard in the AED box. Jim, you want to give us an update on the 5G on Collins Street?
Yes, sir. It's been a long road, but we finally issued a permit, I guess it was on the last Wednesday. So they're set to move the pole from the Dune to 24 Collins Avenue. We think it's a better place than the original one since we couldn't co-locate the pole with DPNL. So we're all set to go that. So they've got their permit application, and I'm waiting for Arianda to give me a start date on that.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Hopefully, that'll be moved before the summer season. We'll be discussing in April, Mayor and I've talked about this, about possibly changing our language in our rental code. We're having some issues. We're not having issues, but some property owners are having issues when dealing with Airbnb and some others about having the 3% taken out. But at the end of the day, in our rental agreement with the property owners, it's their responsibility, it doesn't matter who they go with, to pay the town the 3%. That's their responsibility. It's not our responsibility, but we will try to change the language. We'll talk about that possibly in April to match what Rehoboth has. I don't know if the mayor's going to mention our meeting with the county and the additional funds. You can mention that, okay? Great job by the team getting ready for summer. And again, the police did an outstanding job this past weekend. Pending any questions, that's all I have, Mayor.
Counsel, any questions? Town manager? Not hearing any.
Hello, everybody. All right, so I'm going to start off today. We're going to do a promotion ceremony, and then we will introduce you to our newest officer with the mayor swearing him in today. So I'm going to start off with Colby and Dylan. Come on, step on up. So these two officers graduated from the police academy last March. They have completed one year of, face the audience, face the audience. So they have completed their one-year probation. They've done an outstanding job. Dylan, basically, he's one of our guys that handles all the bikes. He's going to go to the bike instructor school, and he will be instructing all our seasonals on when we have that program. Every year that they come, they have to have a certified instructor, so Dylan will be handling that. Colby just got his motorcycle training. Will be riding one of our new motorcycles, and he helped design and create that program. So they've both done an outstanding job. You see them out and about a lot. They run a lot of traffic. They're very proactive, and they've done a fantastic job and are a great addition to our team. Both of them have served in the National Guard, Army National Guard. Dylan is a sergeant. He's had six years, and he's still, he just extended his tour of duty with them. He's doing, we appreciate him for that. And Colby did six years and was a sergeant, and he just basically said he's had enough of that. So we want to thank them for their service. So today, I'm basically promoting them to the rank of PFC. They've done an outstanding job. Good job? Great job. Outstanding. Got it? Thank you, guys. Guys, free to go.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Adam, step on up. So today, I want to introduce you to Adam. A lot of you may have seen Adam. He was a seasonal officer with us for two years before he decided to accept a position with us. He just graduated from the academy on Friday night. He has started FTO. He won the Top Shot Award. Adam is 22 years old. He was originally from Newton, New Jersey. He graduated from Coots Town University in 2024 with a criminal justice degree, and he was a football superstar. So the mayor is going to swear him in. Mr. Mayor, let me give you the oath of office. Here we go. Here you go, sir.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Word firm.
Word firm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Delaware.
The state of Delaware.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The charter.
The charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the town of Dewey Beach.
The town of Dewey Beach.
And that I.
And that I.
Will faithfully discharge.
And that will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of a Dewey Beach police officer.
Of a Dewey Beach police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We'll have you sign.
Love tall people.
He even had both sides.
Hey, Gary, you want to come up?
Don't make you guys look short.
Something's best.
Great.
Thank you.
Chief, anything else?
Oh, yes, I have a lot more. All right, so for an update, you guys are free to go, gentlemen in the back. Thank you so much. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, so our seasonal academy starts April 12th. We are still interviewing for positions. We keep going back and forth. We do have a few of our people that we have offered positions, but they're also in processes with other agencies to go to academy, so some of them might end up leaving us and going to an academy, which is great news. We put out our new motorcycles over St. Patty's weekend. They've been a huge success so far. We created our motorcycle program based on numerous grants that we were able to obtain, and also we received a generous donation from the Dewey Business Partnership, and that's how we were able to obtain a new bike, a used bike, as well as the helmets, all the communication equipment and the gear for the bike. So we hope that's going to be a great success. They can run traffic on the bikes. They have computers set up on the back, and they're able to run traffic and stuff. So Colby was one of the ones that was just up here. He's one of the newly certified operators. They were certified by the University of Delaware. They had to attend a very rigorous one-week motorcycle training program. And Colby and Sergeant Schmidt are the two that are trained on our motorcycle. So we hope that's going to be a great program for our agency. They'll be able to get in and out of traffic, especially during the summer months when it's congested. They'll be able to respond to calls quicker. So, and actually, when you're on the bikes, just like being on a bicycle or on foot, you have more access to the public. So we think that's going to be a great program for us. We have, we're going to have two dispatcher openings. We did post a flyer out on our website and on Facebook, one of our dispatchers, she just finished her degree in cybersecurity, so she'll be getting a job in that, leaving in April. And our other dispatcher is going to be a nurse, so he's going to start his new job in June. So we desperately need some dispatchers. So if you know anybody that's interested, have them send in their application to us. We have, let's see, what else do we want to talk about? Business stickers. So we have a flyer. We actually have these little, it's hard to see, but we have these little property check stickers, and we've gotten a lot of questions about them. We're putting something out to all the business owners on an email. What it is, it just means the officers are going out and they're checking properties, and they're leaving a little sticky that they checked your property on this date and time. And the great thing about that is if there is a burglar or something, and that gives us a date and time to start from if we can see that. They're not going to put on a sticker every time, because you might have 20 stickers on a door, especially in the offseason, but it's just something we're doing to let you know that we are out and about checking properties. St. Patty's Day weekend, we had approximately, I think, from Friday and Saturday night, maybe 21 officers out here. We were, all our officers were either, we had a couple on daywork, and the majority of the department, everybody was working Saturday and Friday night. We had date and the fire marshals generously joined us. They staff us, and they do the bar checks and all that, but they're great visibility because they're all in uniform. And the chief of Milton also came out and helped us on Friday night. So we had a huge coverage. Friday night wasn't bad, but Saturday night or after 11 o'clock, it was pretty busy, and we had a lot going on. So it was a very interesting evening after that point. But everything went well and smooth, and we're gearing up for the summer. A bunch of us attended CART training in Bethany this week, and what that is, it's a child abduction response team. So the state is trying to form a CART team, and the CART team is for child abductions and missing children and such like that. So what they're looking at doing is bringing in different agencies from all over the state so that when we do have a child abduction or a missing child that goes on to a prolonged amount of time, that we can bring in resources from all over the state and that we have a call-out list. So when something happens to a child, we can hit that phone list or tree or email and get people to the scene right away. So we went through a three-day training on that, and hopefully, in the next several months, we'll be working on that as a state, because the state of Delaware does not have a CART team, and that's what we're focusing on now. Ocean View Police Department is spearheading that, so that's going to be a great program that we're going to be highly involved in. And let me go over our stats. This is for February, because we're always a month behind. We had 233 calls for service. We had eight criminal arrests, 107 traffic citations, 161.5 traffic enforcement hours. We handled three accidents, and we had one DUI arrest. So, you know, it's one of our slower months, but we're already starting to pick up, especially after the St. Patty's Day weekend. I think that's about all I have.
Can I just give one more update?
Sure.
I think you're going to be coming to the next meeting asking for another car.
I am.
Do you want to talk about that, just so the rest of the council can hear?
Sure.
Okay.
So, as you know, probably, I think it's been, I don't know, maybe six to eight weeks ago, one of our officers was hit by somebody on his way home from work, and his car was totaled. So his car was already old, about eight, nine years old with a lot of miles on it, but we did hope to keep that on our fleet for at least maybe two more years. Unfortunately, the car was totaled, so we're out another car. And I do still have about four to five vehicles on my fleet that are eight to nine years old with a lot of miles. And I had brought, I know we weren't going to discuss the whole thing today, but I brought a bunch of receipts for the last six weeks. Unfortunately, sometimes everything hits at the same time. A lot of our cars, our older cars are going down, and I probably have $8,000 in vehicle repairs of receipts. So we're just trying to get through to, you know, to next year so we can buy another car. Our new cars should be coming in next week, and they'll be outfitted, the two that you approved already. And they'll be outfitted. That'll probably take, you know, up to six weeks to get them outfitted with all their emergency equipment on. But then we'll still have a bunch of cars that still need to be replaced. We just finally got up to 13 officers, so Adam will need a car. So the goal is if we can take the money that we got from the other car, we got $18,000 for the car, and we got $12,000 for all the equipment in it, and take that money, and we have enough money to purchase another car and outfit it, then we'll be in good shape. And we'll actually, at that point, if we can do that, next month, I'll only have one take-home car left, which is that will be Adam's. That is a very old vehicle, and then I still have some old vehicles as spare vehicles. So that is the goal, is, as you know, when I first got here, the fleet was in really bad shape, and you guys have done a great job replacing things, but we're just really struggling now because for summer, all these old cars seem to be falling apart right now.
I just didn't want it to be a surprise next month, so thank you, chief.
Yes, thank you.
All right. May I ask the Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce, Carol Everhart, please, give us an update?
Dewey Beach, Chamber of Commerce.
Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce.
That's it. Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I just want to bring you up to date. We've done a lot since I was last here, but they were mainly general membership meetings. I did forward. Did you receive the report? Okay. I did want to mention that yesterday, yes, we did have the awards banquet install our board of directors, and we were very pleased to provide the volunteer of the year opportunity for Dewey Beach. That was wonderful. I do want to mention SB 21, which was finally heard last week, no, this week, Wednesday. HB 21, which is the one that deals with the corporate law. So close to half of the state's budget comes from the corporate law. I just got a text while I was sitting here from our legislative representative, the Willis Group, and he said that it did, they did get the support. So it's been supported. Next step is probably it'll go to the Supreme Court because of the Musk, Elon Musk situation, and now we have the support of the state. So as far as we know right now, we've done all we can do except show up when this comes up again. Okay? All right, I'll make sure you knew that. Also, wanted you to know that business, the next, well, thank you for coming to Business After Hours. That was a great St. Patty's Day party we had there. Chamber hosted the installation yesterday. April 9th is, the Chamber will host Business After Hours at the Summer House, and Merchant's Attic is April 12th. We have to hold that at Cape and Lope High School because we don't have a facility big enough. We outgrew everything. That's a wonderful problem. So if you have an opportunity to go, we also sell, just so you know, if you had excess equipment, think of a yard sale. Okay? Indoors. And if you had product, whether it's office supplies, whatever it is, if we know that, we can certainly provide space for the town to sell that. It's very successful. And then I just wanted to give you an update. I'm very happy to report that when I look at the 19971 zip code from the middle of the Indian River Bridge into Rehoboth and then up to Midway, that's 19971. When I look at the accommodations for overnight, in 2024, on a Wednesday night, it was $12,389. This year was $13,912. Last year, on a Saturday night, it was $14,589, and this year it's $19,271. So as far as overnight accommodations go, and remember, I don't have short-term rental information yet, and I don't know when I will have that. It's definitely going to be collected by the state, and I don't know their means of providing that to us other than a portion of their income. A portion of that goes back through the chambers, through the state, through the county. And as soon as I start getting that, I'll report on it. And then I'm going to hold on parking because I see it's on the agenda, correct? Okay. Questions? Make them easy.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to open the public hearing. This will be a public hearing regarding an application submitted by Emily McCollie for the Atlantic Oceanside Hotel located at 1710 Coastal Highway, Dewey Beach, Delaware, for temporary expansion of premise for the event Bike to the Beach to be held on June 20, 2025. Come up and give us a few words.
Thank you.
They're going to open up for public comment.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for having us. My name is Emily McCollie. I work with Block Party Hotels, and this is.
I'm Benjamin Daly, Director of Operations for Bike to the Beach.
And we also have a friend and local expert over here as well. So this year, Ben approached us to participate in what's becoming an annual, hopefully, an annual event called Bike to the Beach, and I was super excited because it's an opportunity for us in the hotel business to kind of give back to the organizations that we're passionate about. So today, we're here to apply for the temporary expansion premise, to go ahead and do just that, to become a somewhat sort of finish line, celebratory, you know, finish of the Bike to the Beach event that starts and originates at various points from Washington, DC, all the way to Dewey Beach in efforts to raise funds for various tourism charities. So, any questions?
Well, any questions from the general public? Counsel, any questions?
I had first heard there would be food trucks and then it didn't show up in the proposal, I don't think. What were the decisions, or did I miss it?
There was on one of the maps. I have just here, just behind the building on Atlantic Oceanside.
Yes.
That runs parallel to Coastal Highway. There's a, yeah, see, orange food truck.
Truck with a question.
Food with a. Yeah. We're exploring different food options and working closely with the town manager and so forth to figure out the best option. So we have explored food trucks. We're also talking to other vendors as well. So we're actually just waiting to kind of coordinate directly with the council and the team in town to figure out the best option for that.
So, Mr. Mayor, so this will take place on June 20th.
So, Mr. Mayor, so this will take place on June 20th. It'll take place on a Friday. It's going to be busy. Just to kind of give some background, the chief had set up a call today with Sussex County Paramedics, Rehoboth Fire and Rescue, Chief Snyder, also with Del Dot DSP, Melissa who was on also, and with the team you see in front of you, to make sure that the incident that happened last year doesn't happen again this year. And I'm, I'm happy to report that I've asked Melissa and Emily to provide certain things, and you see those in the expansion of premises in front of you today, to the point where they're going to have somebody from Fire Department, actually, there at the finish line. We've asked them to go to a certain place to cross Route 1. They'll come in southbound into town. They will turn west on McKinley Street, they'll turn south on Guado, then they'll turn east on Reed, get to the light at Grotto's, wait for the light to change. They'll have volunteers out there. They'll get them across the light, and then they'll head back up and come into the parking lot at Block Party Hotels. As far as the food truck, this is like an expansion of premise, a one-off type of thing we've done in the past. We've let people have food trucks when they've come before us like this for special events. As of right now, they have not locked that in. So I would, I would say you should probably consider, they may have a food truck when you consider this. But Chief, you're pretty satisfied with the safety concerns?
Very satisfied. That was worked out today, and we're ready to go.
Yeah, I just know, I know that when we do Dewey goes pink, Grotto's brings in a truck to deliver pizzas, so it's in accordance with things that we've done in the past, not opening, I know we're going to be talking about food trucks later. It's a different concept than today.
Right.
Any questions of...
Yes, sir. So do you have a sense of how many guests you have in your hotel that particular week, and whether this event might lead to increasing the number of guests? And then what are you going to do about the loss of parking for your paying guests?
That's a good question. So we all know the influx of people that come into Dewey Beach. As of sort of June, it starts to get busy. The hotels in June sit weekday at about 65% to 75% occupancy. On weekends, we start to see more and more, so we sit at about 90% at Block Party. Hopefully 100 would be nice, and sell out. Thankfully, this is happening on a Friday, so some of the setup will take place, you know, Thursday and then Friday, the bicyclists will come in on bikes. So they won't come in on cars. They don't have vehicles. We'll have storage in the parking lot for the bicycles. And they will either stay Friday, they'll either leave Friday night after the race and go home, whether it's pickup or ride back to where they came from, or they will stay the night at our hotel. We have 108 rooms at Block Party, so they'll, they'll rent one of those and, and get picked up the next day. So we have 108 hotel rooms and 108 spaces at Block Party. So it's one vehicle per room, parking-wise, and some of those people will have bikes, so we'll have plenty of parking because some of the people won't be bringing the cars. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
And you, I believe in your plan, you have a way for people coming in cars to get in?
Yes, yes. So the, the bike race will finish coming southbound up Coastal Highway into the parking lot, and then there is the entrance to Beach House and Block Party through Dagsworthy and back McKinley. So they can come, cars can still come in.
So cars can come in here, bikes are coming in this way?
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Great. So you do anticipate that you'll have adequate parking for your guests?
Yes, and this, the map of the, you know, the food trucks and everything will be broken down by about 5, 6 o'clock that day, and Friday night, guests coming into town kind of trickle in between 4:00 and 9:00, 10:00 p.m. So as we break down, people will be coming in and chipping.
What's your concern?
So, so when you look at the map that they gave us, they've got tables and chairs, can you bring it back up? Cooling station, and the music where you would normally have people park. And I think that's what, what our external...
I mean, guests assume they have parking on site, and...
We have...
So that's, that's the...
Yeah, we have park, another parking lot. So that roof, that flat roof to the right of the picture is the flat roof of Beach House Dewey, which is part of our block. We own the whole block between McKinley and Dagsworthy. So we have that whole parking lot as well.
The question is, you're losing some spots where you're having the event.
Yes.
So the question is, are you going to not have enough spots when everybody shows up? Because you're using, I think I heard you say, most people check in between maybe 5:00 and 9:00, so you won't need all those spots.
We won't need them, and because a lot of people staying at night came in on bicycles, they won't need a vehicle, they won't need a vehicle parking spot anyway. So, no, I don't believe that parking, it was a concern of mine when I first started this, and then I was like, yeah, it's apparent to me that we're going to be fine.
Well, if we do have issues, it'll be a learning lesson.
And if they end up parking on the street, we'll end up...
And then you'll make...
I didn't want to say that out loud.
And we, and we, I take care of all the digital emails that go to guests, and we're going to put on there that if, you know, we always put on there that the street parking, and they can pay the, pay Park Mobile and, you know, all that stuff, so.
Okay.
We're happy to accept the revenue.
Happy to give it.
So, I'm sorry, you went away again. That building, that's the pool area, and all that parking is still available?
Yes, on the Beach House Dewey side, yeah. From that, from that building to Dagsworthy, just right up here.
Yeah, I was kind of...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, around that pool.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, we're going to close the public hearing, move on to Section 4 of the agenda items. Remember, public comment will be taken for each of the items that we're going to be discussing. The first is now discuss and possibly vote on applications submitted by Emily McCauley for the Atlantic Oceanside Hotel located at 1710 Coastal Highway, Dewey Beach, Delaware, for temporary expansion of premise for the event Bike to the Beach to be held June 20, 2025. We've heard their presentation and public comments. Mr. Zolper, do you have anything else that you would like to say?
No, except there's been a lot of time and effort put in by this team to try to, to try to get this done and do it in a safe manner. It should be wrapped up by 6 o'clock that night.
Okay. My only concern, obviously, is the bikers adhering to the laws, the trap laws.
Yeah, if they don't, they were told today that they won't have the function next year.
Okay. Counsel, any, any questions? Not hearing any negative motion?
I move that we approve the temporary expansion of premises.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Chief's happy.
Item, second item, presentation by the Center for Inland Bays regarding Living Shoreline Project.
There we go.
Thank you for having me here. And my name's Bob Collins. I'm the manager of programs and facilities for the Delaware Center for the Inland Bays. We're a national estuary program. We're located, our office right up at the Indian River inlet, and we're in the process of planning a living shoreline.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, so problem, the existing condition's obviously flooding, and we believe that we can use a, a living shoreline, or living shoreline techniques to address these problems here. We have helped and provided technical expertise and installation on Reed Ave for one. So this is a part of the, the process of a number of projects addressing flooding in Dewey Beach. I think you all know the problems here. This is the end of Dagsworthy Street, where that's basically, that's sunny day flooding out there. Next one, more, more sunny day flooding, and that gives us some of the problems that we have on erosion and damage of infrastructure. So those are our, our problems here that we're addressing flooding, both tidal and stormwater, sunny day, particularly sunny day flooding, erosion, which puts sediment and nutrients into our water. What is a living shoreline? It uses nature or nature-based techniques to address flooding and erosion. And just really quick, the Center for the Inland Bays is a founding member of the Delaware Living Shoreline Committee. We've had various initiatives and technical approaches. We've also installed six living shorelines in the watershed with two in planning, Sunset Park being one of them. The other one that's in planning is at, out at Thompson's Island. Okay. Some of the techniques that we've used, the top left-hand corner, those are oyster shell bags. The center has had an oyster shell recycling program since 2013, 2014, excuse me, where we collect shells from local restaurants, cure them, and use them for our various projects. The reason we do that is shellfish shell is a real important substrate for other shellfish, and that, that, you know, gives us a, that makes the living part of the living shoreline, if you will. Some of the other tech materials that we'll use in the top left are cor logs, and that's basically a coconut-type material. Down in the middle is, that, those structures are known as oyster castles, and they're, it's made out of cement, and they're in a, in a small modular thing so that you can, you know, construct various configurations of it. But typically, in the cement that's used to make the, the individual blocks are some type of shell, so it does help with the recruitment of other shellfish out there. On Reed Avenue, some of the other materials that we've used, HESCO, yes, excuse me, thank you, HESCO barriers, which basically provide structure for us. And on the left, you can see the HESCO barriers and the shells that have been used over there. And finally, planting, we'll put sand or fill in various places and then plant afterwards. And the rooting of the plants is what really gives you the, the structure to it. So the ones that we plan on using for Sunset Park, the oyster castles, there was a different material that we had originally looked at that's pyramid. It goes by the, the brand name WODs, which is Wave Attenuation Device. They're real heavy. We've used them at a project out at the James Farm, and they're, we feel that this is going to be something that we can do with volunteers if necessary. It's just, it takes a lot of the, the hard work of installation and puts it into a smaller package that we can, we can put out there. Of course, we're going to use shell bags. We are going to create some marsh, we're going to create some dunes, and then modification of the Lions Club marsh so that we can address the drainage coming down from, that's McKinley, right?
McKinley, yes.
Yeah. And there it is, right there, so. We've split the project into two phases, and it's a little confusing here. A REACH is what our designer, that's the individual unit of land that he hasn't, has, hasn't designed these projects. So a REACH is a little different from the PHASE, because PHASE 1, we're starting at REACH 3, which is down at the Lions Club Marsh, and then kind of moving north. REACH 2 is partial, it's right about in the middle of that shoreline, and there'll be a oyster castle breakwater in that part. PHASE 2 is, will be the end of Dagsworthy, excuse me, and Sunset Park proper. We split them into two for several reasons, not at, you know, one is that the other project that, that's going on, that's the ORPT project is going on. And also, we're trying to make sure that whatever we do at the end of Dagsworthy is, takes into account the, where the former Ivy was and the elevations and such out there. We just didn't have that information going into this part of the project. So I don't know how well you can see these, but I'll try to point some things out on them. This is, this is PHASE 2 and REACH 1, which is actually Dagsworthy. And you can see there's a number of different features that are in here, but more or less that there'll be, will creation of marsh and then addressing some of the drainage, drainage features that are out there, maintaining, replacing as, as necessary out in there. Go to the next one. This is PHASE 1, where we're going to start with REACH 3, and this is addressing the drainage. So on, in the Lions Club Marsh, it is, the water pools and doesn't drain correctly in rainstorms and that type of thing. And also, but we want to make sure that we address those drainage problems without making the high tide flooding worse. So the, at the end of the, at the end of the, the channel through the marsh there, channel, if you will, it's going to be very shallow, we'll be doing a living shoreline where we're protecting the barrier, protecting the edge of the marsh with a barrier made out of oyster shells and cor logs, that type of thing. HESCO barriers are going to be used closer to Hayden Street for that neighborhood there so that water that backs up won't, won't be spilling into their yard. Again, this, this is the actual drawing of it, and shows out, out at the end of the project where it meets the bay, that's where we'll be using the cor logs and the oyster, oyster shell bags. The oyster shell bag is really just, it's a building block for us, but it's a mostly natural product, and it does allow for recruitment of shellfish there that will hopefully strengthen the, the edge of the marsh. And REACH 2, also on PHASE 1, and this is out, I don't know if I'm supposed to be pointing or not here on it, but the edge of the, the corner there by North Beach, and what that does is that that, that dissipates a lot of the energy that will be going to PHASE 1. And we'll be using a, the oyster shell, the oyster castles at that, that location. It allows us to, again, use volunteers, work in different tidal areas there. The, the so-called WODs that we used before require heavy equipment and a relatively large boat to get them out there. So we think that we can get the same breakwater effect on it with using these, and it's going to be a much, much easier installation. Yeah, another picture of REACH 2 there, and that's where the, where those blocks are, that's where the, the breakwater will go. Next one. Yeah, and again, just another picture of the WODs and the oyster castles. Just of note, up in the top right corner here, that's a relatively large barge, that rhymes, for, you know, for these shallow waters, and it really, it maxed out the crane, and we had a number of issues doing it. We feel that by using these oyster castles, again, we can achieve the same results in a, in a way that's going to be a little bit less, less challenging. So the next, next steps, we have completed design. We have submitted permitting both to Denrec and to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. You know, we, we anticipate issuance of permits by December of this year. That's always a, a little bit of a bottleneck, so we are hopeful that we can move this along. Implementation, well, we're typically going to be involved in a time-of-year restriction of, of construction from March 1st through the end of September. So there is an opportunity perhaps to have this installed next winter, but I think it's going to be more likely that it's going to be February 2026, or excuse me, fall 2026. So. Our funding, we do have a community water quality improvement grant. That seems to be secure. The bipartisan infrastructure law funds are at risk. We are, at this point, are not sure whether those funds are going to be there or not. I guess stay tuned on it. So with that, I'll take any questions that we have on the project.
Anyone from the public? Looks great.
Yeah. I had a question. So, we were just talking about the other day. So where FEMA requires studies on these, how it affects when we fix one area, do we flood other areas because this area is fixed?
Yeah, and I, this project isn't a FEMA...
Right, so, so the permitting on this is going to go through the Army Corps of Engineers, and they're going to have their requirements. Denrec's going to have also their requirements for this, just like other projects that are, that are... Just like other projects that are, that are, that are going through the town have to get Army Corps and Denrec permits. The other thing, Mr. Mayor, if you look at projections for infrastructure out to 2027, I did project $75,000 possibly to go to this if the Senator DeLumbe said, hey, can the town of Dewey Beach contribute? That would come from, with the approval of the Infrastructure Committee and the approval of the Commissions. But I projected that out in 2027.
Great. Bob, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next item, review of February financials. Ms. Hall.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you can see from the financials, we're closer to breaking even in February than we had expected. This is due to the continued strength of transfer tax and the efforts of the first, the front office and parking enforcement in following up on outstanding accommodations, tax, and parking tickets. As we finish up this fiscal year, the departments attempting to get any, the various departments are attempting to get any last minute bills into me so that I can have everything properly accounted for in fiscal year 25. Much of the extra police coverage over St. Patrick's Day opening weekend has, was covered by grants that the department received. So this is a savings to the town, and that will be seen in the March financials. For the April meeting, I will have numbers enough for the Commissioners to be able to vote on whether they feel they can fund fiscal year 26 capital expenditures as was stipulated at the approval of the operating budget and with the tentative approval of the capital expenditures budget during the February meeting. At that time, I would request that the Commissioners also stipulate how they would like any other excess revenue to be allocated at the end of the audit. Such as setting aside for future capital expenditures, future pay increases, or whether they'd like all of it to go towards the town hall. This would need to be stipulated by the Commissioners ahead of time so that when the audit is completed, they can properly allocate everything. I've also wanted to update the Commissioners on two projects that they approved the funding for. In November, the Commissioners approved the purchase of a new timekeeping system. I've been working with the company as well as Sergeant Schmidt and Ms. Kramer, the Police Department Administrative Assistant, on this project. The police have set up schedules in the system and have had random employees spot testing the usage of the system. They will be having a training for the entire department on the usage of the system on April 8th and April 10th, after which they will be basically live on using the new timekeeping system. We will have the video training that the police will be getting, that we will use for, on the new system, we will use for all the other employees. This will, there'll also be a printed document that the new employees will have as backup. Lifeguards will have a time clock that'll be set up here in the life saving station that they will clock in with. As far as the new modules for admins that were approved with the new budget, the implementation will take 12 to 15 months for the full process. Ms. Benazak and I met virtually with the project manager in charge of the implementation on the 14th. There is a lot of moving pieces that'll be coming together in the end, but I've already started reviewing the videos that were sent me for the workings of the new modules so that I can start understanding how everything will work and start asking questions about how we already do things and how things will affect the new, the financials and how they'll start to come together for everyone. And this really makes it a lot easier for the budgeting and the financials in the future. As far as the audit is concerned, I've already been in contact with the auditors. Allison Andrew and Paul Casson and I will be touching base after tax season is over. And we will be meeting with the auditors in May to finalize some timelines. We're hoping to have the first of the files to the auditors in the middle of June, and the audit will be finishing up with the current timeline that we're looking at in the middle to end of June as currently planned. So we'll have plenty of time to get it by the time the code sets.
Mr. Mayor, I got two things to add. One thing on the audit, we will be addressing the three trial balances that we, you know, in the last audit, that question came up. And the other thing, with that leftover funding that Ms. Hall's talking about, we will first put the money into the rainy day fund to bring that up to where it should be, and then we'll come back to you and ask, where do you want the other funding to go?
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Hall? Counsel.
Well, great job, Shannon.
Good job.
Very clear.
All right. Next, discuss a possible vote to reappoint Jack Rutherford to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Persinger.
Yeah, before I make, make a motion, I would just note that we should be considering it one other name next month. And when we do that, that will bring the membership of Planning and Zoning Commission up to its full complement. So I would like to move that we reappoint Jack Rutherford to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Noting for April's agenda. Next item, discuss possible vote and ordinance to amend Chapter 158-9 of the Code to revise the hourly parking meter fee, as discussed in prior meetings, especially around the budget. That ordinance was developed for us to potentially increase our parking meters from $3 to $4. $3.50 to $4. Sorry, I lost my place. I'll have a pause, please. Any questions on what's been proposed?
Motion.
Anyone here, well, yeah, any public comment concerning the increase in parking fees?
As far as the chamber goes and any information that's gone out, we have not put any information out about the fee. We do have the timeframe. So if the, if the timeframe isn't being changed, there's nothing that's been put out to the media or anyone else.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Yes, sir.
Well, I would just note that when we approved our, our budget for FY 2026, the increase from $3.50 to $4 was part of the, was one of the assumptions in approving that budget.
I saw this as just finalizing.
It's finalizing.
Right, right, right. Just to be clear.
With that being said, could I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any conversation? Not hearing, hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Another one passes unanimously. Next item on the list is G, discuss possible vote on an ordinance to amend Chapter 1-16 and Chapter 16, Article 1 of the Code to revise definition and procedures relating to reducing the population and protecting the welfare of the towns abandoned and feral cats. Ms. Benazak, would you please give us an overview?
So this, this draft ordinance came about because a few months ago, the council approved a legal and editorial review of the code. And during that, it's an ongoing process, but this chapter in particular had a fair amount of proposed corrections or just highlights from the team that it should probably go under review. So that's how this came about. And some of those concerns found in the chapter were some outdated and incorrect state code references, just chapter numbers were wrong, pretty easy fixes there. The town issued feline control license, which is no longer in practice. There were a number of definitions that were originally tied to this section of the code, and since those have been moved out to their own section of definitions, a few of those didn't quite make sense. Good example was, one term was abandonment. And if you just look up abandonment in the code, it directly pertains to abandoned cats. So it's just a little confusing that it wasn't directly placed any longer in that chapter. There was also a mention of the Dewey Beach Feral Cat Society. And I had listed in our background information that they were no longer in operation, and I stand corrected that there are still, of course, some members of the Feral Cat Society that are feeding and looking out for the cats. I spoke with our former Commissioner Ellie Mayhew earlier today, and we had actually trapped kittens a few years ago together. So I didn't want to minimize the efforts of, you know, this, there is a lovely group of people that I'm well aware do take care of the cats. But as far as the Dewey Beach Feral Cat Society, whether that should be actually listed in code, as it's not a standing committee or a society that necessarily wants to be advertised out there, not sure if that, that should still be provided in code or not. So that's, this is pretty much just a cleanup, definitely reflecting back on state code as far as animal cruelty regulations. It seems like every year, they kind of strengthen the laws for animal cruelty. The state kind of does a good job looking out for that. So we're kind of just mimicking state law, you know, referring back to it a few times throughout here. So that's it. If there's any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Well, I had some issues with some of the language, I think. I mean, I think the cleanup seems to be well intentioned to protect cats in some sense and to make sure that we are treating cats in the proper manner and not, treating them in the proper manner. First of all, in terms of the definition, it just seemed to me that the definition was too specific here and that there seems to be, the only useful distinction here is between whether or not the cat is domesticated, that is, under the control of an individual person, or it's considered feral or abandoned and basically living in the wild. I'm not sure that you could ever characterize whether a cat is unsocialized or socialized. I mean, I have owned cats in the past. I don't have one now, but I'm not sure if you could distinguish those particular characteristics.
You mean, you don't know which one was happy or which, I mean, social or not social?
Yeah, yeah. So in any case, my suggestion is, I thought that the distinction that was in the original ordinance was, in a sense, in essence, fine. Domesticated cat, a cat known to be under the care, control, and custody of a person, and a cat that is either feral slash abandoned is a cat that, or a cat without identification and not known to be under the care, control, and custody of a person. Just not sure the additional detail there is really necessary. I had some other questions about the, some of the process. Does anyone know if you, and I don't know the answer to this, I've owned cats, taken them to the vets, but if you take your cat to the vet and have the cat spayed or neutered, do they routinely nick the ear? Is that something that's only done for cats?
Did I just say that?
Yeah.
Hi, Ellie Mayhew here. Routinely, if a-
He has to come off, Ellie, or one of the microphones.
Sorry.
I'm not loud enough?
For here we are, it's all the people out there watching.
Sorry about what I wanted to call it out.
Routinely, if it's a pet and someone has a cat spayed or neutered under their protection, the nick in the ear, the tip, is not done. It's mostly the international sign that a cat has been spayed or neutered. And in the state of Delaware, a rabies shot is required at the time of spay or neuter.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It, it does. So in essence, if we have a cat that, someone owns the cat, cat gets loose, cat has to have a collar of some kind and-
Excellent addition to the code, by the way.
I'm sorry?
Excellent, excellent addition to the code.
The only, the only objection my wife raised with me in the cars today was, I've tried to put a collar on my cat many times and the cat loses the collar. So I guess in that sense, the cat would be treated like any wild or abandoned cat at that point.
The distinction would be if I was trapping the cat, and usually it is me who does that, if a cat goes crazy in the trap, absolutely out of its mind, I will probably think it is a feral cat. If it lays here quiet and docile, my guess is it may be a domesticated cat, in which case I would take the cat and, again, observe it, evaluate it. If I think it's someone's pet, I will release it. If I don't think it's someone's pet, it goes and gets spayed or neutered, gets a rabies shot, gets returned to a location from which it was found.
Okay. But your view is, it still is a worthwhile addition to require that?
Absolutely. That puts really the onus on the owner of the cat to make sure their cat, they do whatever they can to make sure the cat is not trapped surgically spayed or neutered, because it probably would have been, and saves me a lot of time and a lot of trips to the vet unnecessarily. And you, the owner, worrying about where the heck did fluffy goat last night?
Right.
Okay?
Okay. A couple of other questions about this. This is paragraph, the, this is any feral or abandoned cat caught by any person, that starts the paragraph. Question is, is it reasonable to require that within four hours of apprehension that a cat be placed in the custody of Delaware SPCA or a no-kill animal rescue group? Is that, again, this is personal experience from someone else in my family who lived in Baltimore and dealt with feral cats quite frequently. She often would, would trap them overnight and then take care of them the next day. Should that time period be widened somewhat?
I think the four hour, four hour window is a good one. I never let a trap run overnight, ever. Sundown comes, trap gets closed, gets picked up for the next day.
Okay. All right. I think, I only have one other question, that is-
Oh, and it is unreasonable to expect SPCA to respond immediately.
Okay.
But I will, as soon as possible.
The return and relocation paragraph, I'm not clear exactly what happens under that paragraph, what the implications are of that paragraph.
Which line are we at?
Line 125.
Line 136.
So if a, if a cat, let's say a cat is found, trapped, whatever, whichever is the case, it's then turned over to SPCA. This talks about, then the cat would be neutered and spayed and then returned to the town?
Yes.
Just dropped off?
So essentially, it is cruel to take a cat from a colony where it knows where to find food, shelter, an area where it's used to, and relocate it wherever we feel like because we don't want it here anymore. That's pretty well accepted in the rescue community to not be good practice to relocate them. Essentially, it's, it's like a wild animal. It would be no different than taking a deer away from where it's, you know, used to and just drop it off somewhere and expect it to survive.
And conversely, you also have that you don't want anybody dumping cats in Dewey Beach. So kind of pre, pro quo, we don't want to bring anybody new into the situation. We don't want to remove them into somebody else's habitat either.
Then, that, that answers all my questions. The only suggested change I have is just to have that distinction, cat domesticated or feral or slash abandoned cat. Just have that simple distinction between the two. Plus, there are objections.
And you're talking about line 25 and 32, though?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just not sure that all of the other detail there is useful unless someone-
Desertion. Same.
Desertion.
I would just, cat comma domesticated and cat comma feral slash abandoned would be the distinction that I would make here. And it's either under the custody or care, control, and custody of a person, or it is
Gary, you want to make that motion?
Well, we'll see if there's anyone else from public comment.
Yeah.
I just want to make point of the distinction is that a lot of times, married, many, many times, people, when they find a cat, it goes through this person, to that person, to this person, it always comes to my attention, almost always. And I can either find it at home or get it spayed, neutered, and relocate it if it's feral. A lot of times, we find cats that have been abandoned. Oh, let's get a kitty for the summer. And then Joe goes back to Philly's, Suzie goes back, I can't have it in my dorm room. And they go, I can't take the cat, I can't take the cat. Bye-bye kitty, we're driving home. And kitty's left with nowhere to go. He's picked up on the street, oh, this is a lovely cat. Let's put some posters up and see if we can find the owner. And nine times out of 10, that doesn't happen, it winds up in my custody, and I treat it as a foster cat, and it goes eventually to find a home after it's been spayed or neutered.
I can attest that she's called.
I only lie about the big stuff.
I was saying, he had a pink collar walking down Bellevue, and Zeke called me, we couldn't help it. Next thing you know, I took, I tried to rescue Zeke, but I have a killer cat. And then Ellie got him, and now Jan has him. Okay, now let's get to the Nalu kitty. Which, you got mad at me, but I gave you out in front of me. Guess who has the killer cat? I do. And that was the Nalu kitty. So I have Dewey Beach kitties.
And we know where you live.
It looks like there's comment on Zoom.
I'm sorry?
There is comment on Zoom.
All right. Who has comment on Zoom?
So Miriam Tabrizi, 16 Dagsworthy Avenue in Dewey Beach, wanted to make a comment about the feral cat ordinance, and thank you, Kate, for bringing this up, and the town commissioners to take a look at this. I think it's wonderful that the town protects these feral cats and has a tradition of protecting them. I just had a question in wondering, it seems the cruelty language, lines 38 through 47, was taken out, is that correct? And the abandonment, cruel neglect, serious injury? I'm just wondering why that language is being stricken. I would encourage the town not to remove that from the ordinance. Please correct me if I'm, you know, wrong there. Many residents and visitors and guests take care of these cats, but there could be people that think of them as nuisance, could be cruel to them or kill them, poison them, et cetera. And I'd love the town to have a firm stance that that is not acceptable in our town. So again, just wondering, encouraging the town not to strike that language. Even if the state of Delaware has it, it's great that the town make a firm stance that we're not accepting it and to follow cruelty code. And then my other comment would be, even for the trapping language and the cruelty language, what is the enforcement provision here? Is there a fine or is there something? Because it's great to have an ordinance, but how are we going to enforce these things to keep the cats safe? So those are my, my comments, but I really thank you for taking care of these cats and trying to protect them.
Thank you for your comments.
There is a reference in line 97 to 11 Delaware C, section 1325, cruelty to animals. And I think the intent was to adopt the state's language with respect to cruelty as part of our code.
Correct.
So that's why I think they deleted the other cruelty language.
Yeah, once you write the ordinance, if we say one thing and the state says another, which one do you observe? So we want to go with one, whether that's the state or our own.
And further, line 132 does have violations and penalties for this section in particular with a civil fine, $500 for each violation. So if the, you know, regulations for trapping, things like that weren't followed, they would be subject to a $500 fine. I know the chief is also an animal lover. I don't anticipate her turning a blind eye to any type of animal cruelty within town.
Any other comments, public comments? Nothing online?
Ashley Low.
Nothing here?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a property owner call me today. Jesse said he's very concerned about the number of cats that are feral that are in the neighborhoods, the people that feed them, who's responsible when the cat actually does some damage? This person said they get underneath the residence and pull the insulation out, but a neighbor is continuing to feed these cats, and he, he just said that, you know, he's, he is somewhat concerned about the damage that some of these cats are doing, and I told him that I would just pass that on to the commissioner.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you.
Maybe, I don't know if this is a question, this was another question that came up in the car today. Does the state or the county have any kind of program to make available free traps if someone wants to, you know, make some sort of response on their own to a feral cat problem?
Um, yes, and I know, well, Ellie, you've made your traps available to me before that I've used.
I have leave-out traps available in the past, and also SPCA will loan traps.
Yes, Georgetown SPCA will.
Where you want, yes.
I did have a question.
Let them loan.
Yes, David.
Yeah, so I saw you have the 45-degree rule on the temperature if you're going to be trapping, and I wanted to ask Ms. Banazak, do we want to have, when you say predicted to be 45, do you want to put a timeframe, like how far for it? My, I guess my big question is, if you carry that out, like any day that's going to be 45, you might just be eliminating the ability to do any kind of trapping for many months during the year, and I didn't know if that was your intention or not.
I didn't think that deep into it, honestly, so I'm glad you brought it up.
And if we're considering temperature extremes, we also consider high temperature, like temperature above?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, 85?
Yeah, it's not, not a bad idea.
All right, so we, we've talked, we've talked about felines. There are two issues I think there are pending. We've cut, we've addressed the fines, we've addressed the cruelty. I think the issue right now is definition, as Commissioner Perkinger has brought up, as well as the temperature parameters in regards to both Commissioner Juzinski and Commissioner Givens put up. So if we can incorporate a motion with those two elements addressed, then we could move forward and approve this.
I think Gary makes the motion and David amends it.
Well, I, on the 45 degrees, I need to know what a somewhat more professional recommendation is around how long and what temperature to use. I don't, I don't know enough myself to know what's the proper answer there.
So, so a trap's not meant to be unchecked for more than two hours? So I think maybe that's why they're, you're not looking forward very far in terms of weather conditions, because?
Okay, so we could just say below 45 degrees within two hours of the trap's operation?
I think that's what's intended by that language, that the word trapping is a reference to being actually engaged in trapping, having a, a trap.
Okay, we say below 45 within two hours of the trap's operation, that would mean people would still be able to do it during the off-mont, just not when it's cool outside.
To below 45 and above 85?
Is that, is that?
I mean, their metal traps are in the shade, they're not getting heated up?
Correct.
So above 90?
I'd go with 85.
85? For more than two hours.
Yeah, life with no trap at night.
Right.
And usually in the summertime, trapping is not really done too much in Dewey Beach. There's too much damage that can happen, too many risks involved. To people who walk by and go, oh, kitty in a trap. Okay, so we're very, we're very conscientious.
So do you think this is?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
So add a top-end temperature?
85.
85. So it's below 45 degrees or above 85 degrees within two hours?
Two hours of the trap being placed.
And there are people that trap on their own, and I have no say over what they're doing. They would have to be very familiar with the ordinance, their insight, I don't want this crappy or whatever, they have to read the ordinance. I'm not responsible or liable in any way, there are anybody else's actions.
I was just looking at you as the expert in the room.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Well-earned.
Okay. Commissioner Perkinger, now we've cleared that up, do you have a suggestion in regards to a motion regarding the modification to the definitions as you?
Sure, I propose that we approve the draft ordinance with the following amendments. Delete the definition of cat comma abandoned, retain the definition of cat comma domesticated, change the definition of cat comma feral to, and add slash abandoned with the definition reading, a cat without identification and not known to be under the care, control, and custody of a person. And finally, amendment we just talked about, which is, which line number was that?
Oh, the line, yeah.
124, oh, no trapping may take place if temperatures are or are predicted to be below 45 degrees or above 85 degrees for a period of two or more hours.
Notion, second. Any other conversation? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Ellie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. Final element is discuss the operation of a food truck within the corporate limits of town, and the commission may vote to refer this matter to town committee, to a two with town committee for review. This is brought to us by Scardus. I've asked them to come and give a few words as to why, how.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for your time and consideration, commissioners and council. We at the Dewey Post have a bit of a problem, and we're busy. We're a very busy restaurant on the weekends, and we have a unique location in town where it puts us right on Route 1. We have a safety concern with, we have a lot of congregation area around Route 1. We don't like go on the sidewalks and blow me out. So we have proposed the idea of having a food truck to supplement our takeout coffee service to go. Lots of, lots of points to touch on there, but of course, what we propose is that existing brick-and-mortar licensed Dewey Beach restaurants have the ability to have that satellite. We're not, we understand the existing reasoning for not having food trucks in town is to protect and to reserve that, you know, and that revenue for the businesses that are licensed in town already. We have an issue where we're overly busy. We would like to have coffee satellite service and takeout because we can't do it in our restaurant now. And to be honest with you guys, on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of business in summer, we're that busy, we can't even offer. There's just too much people there. We have a very small venue, and where we have people, it's too much for congregation. And to be honest with you guys, as restaurateurs, we're just trying to alleviate any headaches and try to make a better experience for everyone, so it's so great about Dewey Beach. And us, by bringing up the idea of bringing a food truck, which, number one, would be only on private property, it would not interfere with any public parking or any public access to anybody, and we have a number of places where we can do that. Where we own our property, we are part of a larger property, and we could put those things on a place that wouldn't be impeding anybody else. We're just looking for an avenue to explore an opportunity that we have. And also on top of that, we think it's, it's introduction, its introduction would be beneficial to town for a lot of events. The great thing about Dewey Beach is that we have a lot of eclectic grounds that come together. In the next few months, we have a lot of dog parties, Bike to the Beach, a lot of different events that come place. And to be honest with you, we're a growing town, and when we do these events on the beach, for instance, our end-of-summer party that the business partnership puts on, we're putting up pop-up tents out there. It'd be much nicer to have an actual vessel to work out of that is health department-approved, that is licensed by the state, and everything is done correctly. So we have had this conversation with Laura, the Delaware's health inspector, we just had our recent health inspection at the Dewey Post, which we passed absolutely, everything's fine, but we introduced the idea of us having a food truck and how it would work. She has already signed off on us having our kitchen, again, a licensed restaurant in Dewey, currently as the commissary for that truck. Our restrooms would also be signed off by the state of Delaware for the health department as being adequate for using that food truck. So we're not trying to add any business to come into town, we just want to strengthen our brands that we have now to, just to promote what Dewey's great about. So we have these arts fests, Bike to the Beach, end-of-summer parties, all those things, we could use those vessels and those vehicles there, you know, and winter galas, the grader truck that comes. And I understand now there's no licensing or permitting that allows it to be anything long-term, and we understand that. But we just want to start the process of seeing how that could be possible. We would really like to extend those services to our customers, but do it in a manner that is regulated and done correctly through the health department, everything is being done correctly. We're not trying to jeopardize anybody's business, only strengthen. So we're just bringing this up to council to hopefully allow us to do that. We just have a problem where we're busy at certain times where we can't even offer the services we want to, to our customer, and this would be the vessel that would allow us to do that. But we would only do it within the proper regulation, restriction, where it needs to be. We don't want this to be a problem for anyone else, just only add to, I don't know, what we already are able to do. So didn't want to know how the next step would go, but we know that we had to present the idea here, so.
Cool, thank you, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, huh? Thank you, Ashley.
Any questions for them before, while they're there, council? Especially for Ashley.
We understand that it's a, it's a talked-about conversation, it has been in the past, but we only want to, again, we only want to strengthen Dewey Beach businesses. We don't want to invite other people, we don't want someone coming from Lewis or Middletown or Wilmington coming down to take away from anything we offer now. We just want to strengthen our brands and our business, and to be honest with you, there could be a nicer touch in town when we do these events, and it could be a much better way to do this. And it's just honestly, it's the next graduation step in what we should do. But just wanted to hear everybody's concerns.
So since you're talking, I hadn't thought about the bathroom issue until you brought up the bathroom issue, and the chief knows that I like to track that public urination data on an ongoing basis. Not ask her recently for that update, but I'm assuming that you're thinking about using the truck near one of your?
Correct.
Correct, yes.
It would be, it would be literally basically onsite for us to be able to do what we want to be able to do and to offer those services to everyone. But again, we've already talked to the health department, and they have absolutely, I can't speak for anybody else's implementation, but for us, where we want to put it on our property, in our areas, or whether it's on leased ground, because we are part of an HOA, so that may be, have to be a leased opportunity that we have to do, but it would be on private property, it wouldn't engage any other, it wouldn't create a problem for anyone else. We just want to make sure we're doing the proper steps and the right things to do.
The health inspector specified ADA bathrooms, which we have available, I don't know if that?
We have a ramp at the post, so it lives by ADA compliance, and she said she absolutely has no issues signing off on us for our current, for our current facilities, that would be absolutely fine. And also, any food truck in the state of Delaware has to have a commissary kitchen. And so she said even more so, you have absolute ability to do that currently where you are now, so she has no issue with doing that. So everything we would do with a food truck would still be following all of the health code and everything that the state of Delaware requires, and they've already signed off on all that. We just need to make sure that Dewey would be, you know, privy to the situation, essentially.
We'd obviously have to change our ordinances in order to accomplish that, but?
Well, that's my question, I hadn't really thought about this before. I don't know what sections of our code would be affected, what we would have to change, and so doing, you know, what the implications would be of making that change for other people outside who might not have the same kind of situation.
You're not going to talk again unless you get up to the mic.
I just want to throw out, you could put an unconditional use.
And we were, we own two businesses in town, we own the Dewey Post, you also own Bates, so we understand that the permitting process for eateries and restaurants are two different things, and we can understand that the town would also benefit off of this by having some kind of business license fee or permitting fee that would be necessary, however that is needed, obviously, that would, that would be agreed upon. Paul, any questions?
Yeah, no, not necessarily a question, but, you know, but we're listed as discussing to refer this matter to a committee. So what the interesting thing you said that, that makes me lean that way is if it's on existing commercial property, so it's already zoned?
And you said private, you didn't say commercial.
And private, too, right?
You said private, not commercial.
Oh, private.
Well, our whole complex would be commercial, too, so, you know.
Okay.
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't even be a concern.
Right, so, but I think that's what the P&amp;Z would consider in there. You know, I guess the hangup is the language we have in one of our ordinances, it says food truck, you know, so that's what we'd have to, would have to further define, okay, you're disallowing food trucks, but you're going to allow food trucks if these conditions are, you know, I think that's something that P&amp;Z would have to work through, some language.
Counselor? So, I don't, there are a lot of hurdles here, I think, not that it can't be accomplished if everyone thinks it's the right thing to do. One of the concerns I would have would be, how do we define this location, you know, this proximity of the food truck to the, to the restaurant? Apparently, it's not necessarily going to be onsite. So if somebody had property that's zoned appropriately, they could propose to rent it to somebody else with a food truck who could bring a food truck in from out of town, that's not what, what these folks want, but then we'd have to draw a distinction between why we would allow existing brick-and-mortar restaurants in Dewey to engage in this kind of activity, but not somebody else from out of town who's not operating a restaurant in Dewey. That might be a constitutional issue that we've got to overcome. Does this, the facility that serves food and drink, so have to be on wheels? I mean, you do see these coffee huts or whatever, I don't know what the? Yeah. Is that not something that would meet your needs? Does it have to be a food truck itself?
Instead of wheels?
That's a conversation we could, we'd only have, but the real thing is that if, if it's a food truck, it also falls under all of the health department regulations, so that way, a cart essentially, let's say, comparison would be a farmer's market in Rehoboth versus someone that has a licensed establishment. A licensed establishment is a food truck, so they absolutely have the ability to prepare, to clean, to do all those things, versus carts would not have that. So we wanted to go to that level just because everything would then be, how do I say, legisla, it would be regulated by the state, and it would be inspected by the state, everything would be to a standard, versus it being just a cart someone put out that may or may not be temperature-controlled or sanitary-controlled or any of those levels.
Generator.
Right.
Well, I think there's obviously some hurdles, not insurmountable, but some hurdles that we're going to need to take a look at. I mean, obviously, you guys know that, I mean, the intent here was to protect you.
Hundred percent.
And that's why we're here talking about it, because we respect that.
Forty trucks at the end of every beachhead selling at 12:05 to, you know, 2:30 during the summer.
And that was the other thing, is that all of these would be in hours of our operation that are current, from 8:00 AM till, you know, 2:00 PM. This is not something that we're looking to do, a late-night eatery, nothing is changing anything along the timeline that we currently already do.
I think it's important that it remain within the commercial zone, that it not be in any public parking places, these all would all need to be fed into it, because I could see an ideal place to have a food truck is next to the gazebo at the Bay Beach, and that wouldn't be a good idea.
It's not zone commercial.
It's not zone commercial, but we got, that's why we've got to think about...
Okay. We generally don't allow vacant land to be used for these kinds of purposes. I mean, you have to have a primary use, you can't establish some kind of ancillary building on a standalone parcel. Yes, but there, I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, this is a discussion and possibly referred to another, to a committee, but there are like the scenarios that you do need to think through. For example, if Lions Club decided that they were going to lease their parking lot, to, you know, what happens to that? But then again, that stipulation that you'd also have to have a business in town as part of that.
That's the only way we would ever want to have, we don't want this to jeopardize anyone's business, that's the number one thing, you know. It's an issue that we have, and we're trying to explore options that would help us alleviate that problem. And the thing is, all for the greater good, it's not necessarily hurting anybody, it's only strengthening people that already exist, that already pay the town licensing fees, the state licensing fees, all those things, we're just not, we're not asking to bring more business there, we're actually just support the current business we have.
Makes sense. I'm okay with making a referral.
The question for me is, is it appropriate to refer this to any committee at this point? Because I'm not sure that any committee is in the position of understanding what the legal issues are associated with this, what sections of the code really need to be dealt with and how they can be dealt with appropriately. So, you know, if we refer this to any committee, we would have to, there would have to be some stipulation that it would be accompanied by some legal assessment of what needs to be done with respect to the code. I think in general, we as a council are in a position of wanting to, our businesses here in town to be successful, we want to promote businesses here in town, but this sounds like a tricky proposition.
Or in the words of Dale Cook, the unintended consequences.
Yeah, and there could be unintended consequences, is that right? So I just think that legal assessment is really fundamental to doing something here.
Now, this business isn't claiming to be unsuccessful, it's claiming to be too successful. So...
It's an absolute problem.
It's a wonderful problem.
Yes, IRS, did you hear that?
When people congregate on that area, I don't like people spilling onto Route 1. And if we have an ability for that line to be, you know, alleviated and have a place for them to go to, I think that's really the win, and that's what we were hoping to accomplish. But then in that term, we also understand how it could benefit other people that do that in town. There's many other ways we could use it, and there's ways to do it, and ways to strengthen everybody, so I can understand your legal implications, but I would love to be able to define those things and make it correct.
So I'm okay if there's a motion to send this to planning and zoning for them to review with legal input insight and the effect on the other elements of the charter, before you even come back to us for a vote.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that gets the public involvement at that point as well.
Do we have any public comment here today?
I might just say something.
If, come up there, Mike.
Sorry.
We hear you, but all the people watching us...
It's the people on Zoom that can't hear you.
We have so many Zoom people, too. We have a lot of people come in, you know, from the hotel.
People on Zoom are people, too.
And getting them fed, I mean, we house them, right, at hotels, getting them fed is so important. I come down in the summer, too, and I see lines outside the store board, outside Woody's. I mean, Woody's set up a satellite shop just to do, like, to go...
Takeout.
Takeout, because they were inundated, I stood in line at Woody's, it's another 30 minutes, it's, you know, and these guys are like trying to address that problem of getting people fed and not just drunk, which is awesome, too, for you. So I just...
Appreciate that.
To keep their stomachs full of food as well as booze, so I just think it's a really, I love it, it's a great idea, and I love the stipulation of like making sure that the Dewey Beach business has a business, has a kitchen here to stop the outsiders coming in and trying to like, you know, take away the business from Dewey, so. As a hotelier, I'm kind of in support of that, I just wanted to say that.
And with that comment, I know that you have a liquor license, this truck would not be mobile liquor. Just want to make that all out there.
It's not part of our ABC footprint, and again, that's not our direction.
You want me to have my chai tea? I understand.
We've got coffee service in the morning, and we are a busy restaurant, we go on a wait, and it gets congregated with people there, and then people almost don't want to come in because we're that busy. And that's terrible for our perspective, you know, we only want to help people, and we have the ability to, they just can't even come through our front door. So if there's a satellite place for us to be able to put them, that is not inhibiting anybody, footprint-wise, traffic-wise, parking-wise, it's not an issue, then I, obviously, I want this to happen, obviously, but I can understand how there can be some gray areas of legality of how you do that in code, which I understand is very big importance to you guys, but I would just strengthen that with, it could be malleable to the point of however a town wants to make it, just to strengthen those businesses and understand how it can't jeopardize any other mess, so.
So...
Well, Kate, you gave me a look like there's somebody for public comment, is there?
Kate, did you want to make public comment?
We could make it that if the referral is supported, that the initial agenda would be discussion-only, so there would be, you wouldn't get a referral after not having sufficient consideration done by the planning.
P&amp;Z.
Gary?
My only question is, should it just be P&amp;Z, or should Charter and Code have an opportunity to weigh in as well?
I can't speak for Charter and Code, I don't really know enough about what they do, but it seems like a zoning issue to me.
Okay. Yeah, I look at it as...
Again, these are all legal things in the entire state of Delaware, so, you know, everything is, would be permitted, and everything would be regulated correctly.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yeah, at this point, I'd like to make the referral, I don't know how everybody's going to vote, but let's make...
What do you think I was trying to do, Commissioner Bauer? Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Givings?
No, no.
I'll second it.
I would like to make referral to planning and zoning, consideration of the operation of food trucks within the town of Dewey Beach, with considering all legal implications of such change to the code. And they may discuss first and report back before they give a formal proposal to us.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys. And for the record, Ms. Scardus, we have passed laws that have ordinances to protect you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Not us.
We appreciate that.
Okay. With that, we'll go to the closing meeting. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Givings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am so pleased that the opening weekend went as smooth as could be hoped and that you had a wonderful birthday celebration.
That's the last time. Commissioner Bauer?
Concur with that, and I want to thank the chief and the whole staff and everybody involved in making this happen. I know for the most part, it was a great weekend, you know, but we had some incidents there, and everybody got through it and kept us safe, so, thank you.
Commissioner Juzinski?
No comments.
Commissioner Persinger?
There, I recovered a little bit of my memory from my climate change committee report. One of the other things that they talked about, well, the whole meeting really was talking about resiliency, what can you do proactively to make us more resilient to the challenges that we face with respect to climate change? And how prepared are we, you know, after we have a major event here, in the event, if we do have a major event? One of the things they talked about was, what are the businesses thinking about with respect to resiliency? So the committee chair is planning to attend the next business partnership meeting, just to say in essence that we have a climate change committee, we're thinking about these issues, and we'd like to know what the businesses are thinking about as well. And, you know, maybe there's an opportunity there to coordinate some efforts there, but at least, you know, we know what each other is thinking about in this regard, and so we'll see how that plays out, but I just wanted to mention that and make sure that that people were aware of that.
Great, thank you. Just from, my only comments is from looking at the calendar, we do have on April 19th, the egg scoop coming up from Dewey Business Partnership, is followed by Easter on April 20th. That's why normally we have these council meetings on the third Friday, that ended up being Good Friday, but we are closed as a town on Good Friday, so the next commissioners' meeting will be on Friday night on April 25th, 2025, and as Town Manager alluded to, then we're also having the history of Dewey, that long day by the Civic League on the 26th, it's four things. And just as a matter of record, what came, what you will hear in April is some conversation around the accommodation tax language, as well as, I can't read my own handwriting, so with that, kind of going motion...
Thank the county.
Oh, thank you, that's exactly what that does say, thank you, Bill. I'd like to thank Sussex County, as you've been reviewing as part of these meetings, you know that we approved moving forward with the town hall. It is an investment in our future, a needed investment, not only for Dewey Beach, in the neighboring communities, as well as the county. As part of that, we, as we went through the financials, we had a $2.8 million deficit in the building of the new town hall that would be supported through a loan that we are actually out for RFP right now. Bill Zolber and I met with Todd Lawson and members of his team in Sussex County, and they agreed to up their part from a million to a million and a half. So thank you, Sussex County, thank you, Gina and Todd and team for closing the gap on us, so now we're down to 2.3. And with that, I'll make one other comment. What we did comment as a committed donation was received this week from Chris and Lori Shell. Chris and Lori Shell donated $200,000 to town hall, so, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
With that, we now have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And if you donate more, I'll put your name on the council meetings.